We are going to get started calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge and a moment of silence. Roll call.
Barsinger. Baum. Ramsey. Ritz. Rohrbach.
Here.
Shear. Stein.
Here.
White.
Here.
Wilson.
Wilson and Ritz are out for personal reasons. We did hold an executive session on October 6th for personnel. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Right, come on up Gabby.
Can you hear me? Okay. Gabriela Kalugar, Jackson Township. I'm a taxpayer and a parent of two high schoolers. It is time for accountability. All five of you board members that voted to hire our past superintendent, did so against the advice of the teachers' union, human resources, the consultant company, and countless members of this community. You ignore the warnings and you push him through without transparency. Then after his DUI, just days before officially starting the job, our entire community called for his removal. Instead of listening, you kept him in place. That decision embarrassed our district, undermined trust, and has now cost us even more. Now after the most recent scandal, we are paying him anywhere from forty-seven thousand, as reported by media, to close to a hundred thousand, as some of last week's speakers were mentioning. Again, no transparency in this matter, we're only guessing again. Money this district cannot afford, while at the same time cutting teaching positions because of a budget deficit. Let's talk about this payout. In what world does someone who resigns voluntarily walk away with a severance package? Severance is meant for employees who are terminated without cause, not for those who choose to walk away, and certainly not for someone who has repeatedly embarrassed this district. If this board decided to hand over tens of thousands of taxpayers' dollars anyway, that was a choice, your choice, and it was a reckless and irresponsible one. Our students, teachers, and taxpayers deserve better stewardship of our money. As far as the deficit, it didn't just happen. For the past four years, this board ran a deficit budget and now our district is forced to raise taxes to clean up the mess. And while the three of you up for reelection tried to distance yourself by voting against a tax increase, the reality is that the rest of the board had no choice but to raise taxes because of four decisions made over the past four years. And now we're talking again about hiring consultant firms for another superintendent search. Why? The last time you paid a consultant for their expertise and they explicitly advised you not to hire Bradley, you ignored that advice and did it anyway. So why waste taxpayer money again if you're going to disregard the experts? If we have candidates interested in the position from within the district, why not give them a chance? When you are in this position, you should leave your personal dislikes and likes at the door and make decisions impartially and fair with only the district, staff, students, and taxpayers' well-being in mind. All three of you are campaigning using slogans such as "fiscally responsible", "responsible steward of taxpayer dollars". If you are as fiscally responsible as you claim to be, start acting like it. And if this is truly the best you can offer this district, then it's simply not enough for us. And it's time to step aside and let someone else try their best. It's past time to put students, teachers, and taxpayer first. This community deserves better, and it deserves now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Right, seeing none. Any word response to public comment? Alright, we are in voting meeting. The departmental report, I am going to turn it over to Michelle Ludwig for pupil services report.
Good evening. I believe you already got a copy of my report, so I just wanted to just highlight some things from that report very briefly. At this time, we're working on the Alice video presentation for parents. It's been filmed. It's in the works of being edited by ABJ. Bill, myself, and Officer Mengele are featured in the video that we're going to release to parents regarding Alice and the upcoming trainings that we're going to be doing at each of the schools. Also, I just provided a brief update. You were very kind to allow us to have a BCDA last year with our PCCD money. That was the Board Certified Behavior Analyst. We use them to the maximum extent. She was able to really help us revamp a lot of our worksheets and we had some good procedures, but we kind of really honed in on some things that teachers can really use to help us look at behavior of students and really start targeting student behavior in a more positive way. And we're in the middle of training today. Dr. Carrie Henry did some training for elementary. We've been around to the middle school teams. So it's all been going very well and I just wanted to thank you as a follow-up from that BCDA that you approved for us last year. And that's about all I have to report and didn't know if you had any questions.
Does anyone have any questions from the report that was supplied? No? Alright, thanks. Right. I do not have any correspondence at this time, so we will move to action, voting items, personnel with Mr. Stein. Sorry, Mrs. Baum.
Personnel, board actions requested. We are going to skip letter A for right now and so we're going to move on to B, approval to advertise for two temporary part-time over enrollment aid positions, four hours each at New Salem for coverage at the fourth grade level effective immediately through the end of the school year. Letter C, retirement, acceptance of the following retirement resignation with regret after thirty-one years of service to the Spring Grove School District, Aunt Teresa Weaver. Letter D, resignations, acceptance of the following resignations, one through nine, as listed. Letter E, uncompensated leave request, approval of the following requests for uncompensated leave, as listed. Letter F, department chair, approval of the following department chair for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the approved stipend as determined by the collective bargaining agreement and authorizing discretion to reduce pro rate or cancel any appropriated payment because of delayed, shortened, or canceled assignment, as listed. Letter G, extracurricular position, approval of the following individual for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with compensation determined by the extracurricular minimum stipend matrix, as listed. Letter H, support staff substitute, approval of the following substitute for the classification as listed for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as listed. Letter I, Act eighty-six day-to-day student substitute, approval of the following Act eighty-six substitute for a maximum of twenty days for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at a rate of one hundred twenty-five dollars per day, pending all the clearances and disclosure forms from previous employers, as listed. May I have a second for those? Is that right there? We have a second for that and then we'll open it up for discussion for letter A.
Okay, so. Right, I just was waiting, so moved on personnel.
Right.
Okay, second would be Ben, okay. So roll call vote, letter B.
I do have a question. All them resignations, do we know why they're resigning? Is that something that has ever talked about, ever discussed, or what? You know, why they are resigning?
Will you use a microphone please?
Oh, he, oh, for Hope, okay.
I stated that we do exit interviews for all of the school district employees that have resigned or are retiring and provide them a survey asking general information on why they have decided to leave the district. And I told Mr. Shear I can provide that information once we get it from those employees.
And the reason I ask that is I know in the VOTAC, when they give these, they always give a summary of why they're leaving, whether they're going roughly, or why they're coming, going on and so forth. And they do that before we vote on this, that we know what's going on, so. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I have.
Go ahead.
I have a question. On G, we have a middle school student counselor, co-advisor, and again stipend four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So my question is, is that all in school or does that have after-school effect? You know, again, I keep asking about these, so if it's in school, why are we paying a stipend?
I can take that. That her stipend is split with another teacher. They're co-advisors and the stipend is for things that they do outside of the school day.
Yeah, I think they were just responsible for the middle school dance that happened, anything outside of the school day, but also they meet in school to plan those activities. Alright, roll call vote, B through I.
Ramsey. Baum. Shear. Barsinger. Stein.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Rohrbach.
Yes. Alright, we are going to move to letter A. Opening it up for discussion.
I need one of them trucker headphones. So I am not in favor of option one or two. I am in option in favor of three. The reason why is as we just had a resident explain some of the things there. Bring another consultant's fine. And again, if they want to help or we do a hybrid, you know, I would go up to five thousand. I think, you know, a ten thousand, sixteen thousand doing a hybrid is absolutely ridiculous. You know, and again, I understand that's their job. They're going to put a lot of time and effort into it. But if we can, you know, keep things in-house and keep expense down for taxpayers. You know, and my biggest thing was when we were told about candidates and red flags, no one listened. So here we are again, and if that comes, you know, abreast again, what is going to be our consequences? Because we're going to, you know, go out of the realm. The other thing is, you know, I there were certain ones that wanted to be more visible. We wanted to do a town hall meeting. We just, I personally thought the options we had, we should have, you know, opened it back up and that was not looked in favor of doing. The other thing is, you know, we have internal candidates and again, everyone's going to have to go through the same process and apply and do everything like that as well. I think the days, and I sent a letter out where, you know, it's come to, you know, ahead of, there are not many superintendents out there and we all know that. We're all reading the same thing. So, you know, our days of finding a Dave Renault or a Mary Beth, I think, are far from from, you know. We're going to have to utilize the people we have. We need someone to come in and take this district and look ahead. I mean, unfortunately, it's kind of like Penn State. You fire a head coach. The head coach is a leader, but it takes a team. So again, why isn't the whole team dismissed? You see what I'm saying? So it's kind of a shame. So again, my process, I am in favor of option three. If we want to utilize option one, option two to help out, then we're going to have to have a better rate and, you know, see if they could guide us. But that is my options there, thank you.
I am a proponent for option one, that's where I'm leaning. The two things I think about, Doug, as you were. I understand and appreciate the protecting those tax dollars. You've been fighting that, I'm with you on that, spending those tax dollars. But I think for two reasons, I think a consultant is really beneficial. One is the expertise through the process. That is something that we do not have in-house at this point. I'm not saying that eventually we may learn and figure out how to do that. But it's a lot of work. The pool that someone, like an outside consultant can bring in more candidates, I think that's a real positive. But I've said before, like, I'm concerned about Hope. I know that Hope will just say yes. I mean, she's she's willing to do almost anything we ask her to, but at some point, like, we need to step in and say, you shouldn't be doing all of that. Like, this is going to be dozens and dozens of hours of work. I mean, I don't know how many, it's going to be a lot. And that, but by going free and for us to say, we're just going to do this for free, no, we're doing this to sacrifice a whole bunch of time on Hope's account. And so that, I feel, I don't like the way that that feels. I don't like just throwing a whole bunch of extra work on someone that's not done it. And we're not hiring your additional staff to do this. So I don't think that's fair to Hope to do that to her. I'm not even looking at her because I know that she's just going to say, I'll do what you asked me to, but I think it's just too much.
I'll jump in and just give my, I don't have a way that I'm swaying. I, it's either one or two for me. But I want to kind of, Gabby said some things in her statement today about accountability and there's definitely been some ownership in that decision. And it's not taken lightly. So so when we take a look, you know, we want to look forward, you know, as much as we can with not forgetting what has happened in the departure of Dr. Bradley. But his contract was public and there were things in his contract that we did have to, you know, any superintendent that we do have to follow procedurally when a superintendent does leave. So when we do hire the next superintendent, we'll take a look at that language that goes into that if someone would depart early, etc. From a networking perspective of finding candidates, I find value in using the consultant because they do bring a broader scope rather than just advertising somewhere. They actually network to find people. And then also, we did not use our human resources internal employee, the last search at all. We all nine decided not to involve that person. This looks different. It feels different already because Hope will be involved. So that bridge to the district, we will have as a part of the team where in the hiring of Dr. Bradley, we, all nine of us decided not to use the person who was sitting in that seat at that time. So there are different caveats of this situation that we are moving into. So for me, I do see value in using a consultant along with our internal human resources department.
Whether we use as a consultant or not, I agree with what you said, Rachel. And that was my first time going through a superintendent search. And when we got to the end of it, at no fault to anybody, I'm not saying it that way, but I heard for the first time from people about how we did that one differently. I hadn't been part of one. I didn't know. There's lots of things about it that Mr. White just brought up about reopening up the search. It's one thing for people to be critical of who was picked. But they didn't get to meet some of the other candidates. And there's a reason why Mr. White said about opening it back up. And we did get advice about wanting to pick and do it quickly because we lost a candidate, I believe, because before we got to the end of the process, they took a job somewhere else. We lost a candidate because somebody called the other school that they were at and tipped them off, who I don't know, not going to begin to go down that road. But the process that we went through, for a lot of us, it was the first time. And the biggest thing to me that is already different about what happened here is we brought two people out to be more transparent with what we were going to do, not because we weren't trying to be transparent the last time. It was just something that, not having done it before, the process that I go through, I did four interviews today at work, it's not the same as doing a superintendent process. So this idea that anybody was trying to not be transparent in the first place is nothing short of ridiculous. Nobody ever sat down and said, we want to go through this process and try and hide. So the political component to a handful of people, and I'm not talking about anybody specifically tonight, or a different point, or a different time, but the political component about smearing that we were trying to be, we weren't trying to be transparent before, is ridiculous. So there are candidates, as both of those people said the last time, that we have to make decisions because the secrecy that they require to do it if they have another job is important. And outlining and explaining that going to the public and telling them upfront to be in the finals, that they're going to have to be willing to do that, did not happen the last time. And so anybody that thinks that anybody, no matter how they voted, doesn't want a better outcome than what happened the last time, I would wholeheartedly say is nothing short of crazy. So I both agree with Mr. White and with what both of you have said. I see the advantages to doing it internally. I also, based off of listening to what people have said, if, we're never going to pick a candidate that everybody likes. And I see the other side of it, of people coming back and saying, if we didn't spend any money and they don't like the candidate, that's just going to be the stone that gets thrown at us that time. So I would like us to pick whichever one we don't want to do, like we go through when we have three options. And if we have people that don't want option three, let's eliminate one and then go through the process of elimination, which is what I think is going to happen, that we're going to be picking between one and two that way. We can do a process of elimination. Rachel, please.
Karen. Okay, I'd like to, I like option one, because I feel that it's the middle of the road, not the most expensive, not the cheapest, kind of how I run my household. I understand Doug's feelings about doing it in-house, but I also know that starting in January, when the letters go out for retirements, resignations, end of the year, that's a very busy, busy, busy time for the HR department. And I think that they would be very overworked and overwhelmed. So I'm in favor of option one. I think that having somebody with the Association of Rural and Small Schools plays into our favor.
Ron, do you have any feedback?
Yeah, I gotta go long. I think option one is, between the two options, there's very little in consulting what they're going to do. Their, their services are almost identical. Option one is cheaper. And I believe too, we need to have a consulting firm involved in this because people think we have a long time, but it takes a long, long time to do anything in government. And if we don't keep it moving, we're going to be up against the wire, and then we're going to be forced to make a decision to hire someone that might not be who we want. It's just we're trying to fill that seat because Dr. Renaud is on a time schedule also. So that's, that's the way I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein, do you have any feedback or anything you'd like to share?
I guess I would say I, I agree with a lot of what Eric and Karen said. I, I also agree with Rodney. I'm, I'm in favor of number one. I think not only, not just the price, but I, I felt more comfortable with him. I thought he was very much in favor of having at least two, if not three candidates at the end, whereas I felt the, our second presentation was willing to do that, but not quite as open or wanting that. She was a little skeptical of it, more skeptical. But I felt that our first presentation was very much what we're looking for. And I think we can do a lot more transparency than what was happening last time because it, it, we didn't do a good job last time.
All right. So I'm thinking, from what I'm hearing, number three is out from doing our little kind of straw poll here. Do we go around and say which one we want, or do we vote on one? What's your recommendation?
Either that, or someone can, at this point, can move for option one, based on what hearing appears to have enough support, to get someone to make a motion for option one. What's the agenda? If that fails, then we can continue discussion or.
Sure. Okay, so then a motion to vote on number one. Second. All right. So roll call vote on letter A, option one, consult, consulting contract for superintendent search, approval for Springer various school district to enter into agreement with Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools, as consultant using a hybrid approach to conduct the next superintendent search according to the terms and conditions set forth in the proposed agreement at a cost not to exceed $9,800, where they search an incidental cost not to exceed $1,500. Roll call vote on A1.
Shear. Ramsey. Barshinger. White.
No.
Stein.
Yes.
Baum. Roarbaugh.
Yes. Thanks. Six one. Thank you. Motion to adjourn the voting meeting. Second, all in favor. Great. Calling to order the director's study forum, anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move into our program committee's curriculum with Mr. Barshinger.
I'm going to toss this to Dr. Guadalupe. It looks like a pretty, pretty easy one here.
Yeah, you have a draft affiliation agreement with IUP. In front of you is the standard, similar to very, a lot of other ones that we have. We need this particular one because we happen to have a staff member who wants to do an internship. Ordinarily, we wouldn't need an affiliation for our own staff member, but that the, the university is requiring it. So it's, it's similar to one of the ones that we have, and it'll allow the staff member to do our internship.
Okay. Who's doing athletics? And keeping it with Mr. Barshinger, athletics and music?
And keeping it with Dr. Guadalupe. Thank you. You have a memo in front of you regarding a competition cheerleading overnight request. The memo explains, it allows the competition cheer group, if they qualify, to attend this competition postseason, a majority of the costs are being covered by the athletic boosters. Yeah, hold on, it's in, all but the transportation to and from the airport, I believe is what it was. I think it was two, two.
It says 28860. I was just making sure that that was the only thing that was.
That is correct. The athletic boosters are covering everything but the transport. And if we have to pay that, that would be what we have to pay.
All right, moving on to budget and finance with Mr. White.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot to report. There was a memo prepared regarding the ACT index that was released, the base rate of 3.5 and our adjusted rate of 4.7. So even though we are still without a state budget and without a federal budget, we are planning ahead for 2627. Along that lines, also, we have approached, I'd say, the remaining phase of our audit. So I believe tomorrow, early this week, we'll have a document out to you on how we landed for the year with a complete report of variances and explanations. And we would like for all board members to review that, and then we'd like to schedule a budget and finance committee meeting. And when we go into that meeting, if you could provide Mr. White with some key points, questions, talking points that you would like to discuss in that meeting, it would be helpful in leading the conversation and the direction of the meeting. So you could ask about further clarification on the variances, if it does, if my report doesn't give you what you're looking for, you could ask about the budget process. We can bring back up about budget reductions and where we are with them, how we're managing without a state budget, anything like that. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. I appreciate that. So basically, as I said in the last meeting, if each board member could, you know, present three to five items that they would be looking for. So basically, once we get all that, we can compile. If three or four board members kind of have the same thing, we can condense that. So when we are in our meetings, we could be a little more productive and have more meaningful meetings of sitting there and going over the items that you're looking for. So if, you know, it's individual maintenance budgets, or teachers, or this, or, you know, what, what have you, we can, you know, Jen and Mark can have everything together, instead of sitting at the meeting going, well, that's, you know, next meeting, can we look at this and look at that? So, you know, it makes our timelines go quicker. We can make our meetings, again, more productive. So I'm just asking each board member, you know, to jot some things down that they're interested in seeing, knowing, looking at, and we can facilitate everything into, you know, better spreadsheets for everyone.
So are you saying you want us to use last year's budget to come up with them? Or are we going to get a proposed budget this year with the spending that we think we need cuts? Or where, where do we get that information not to do that, what you're asking?
Um, the document that we would like to get out this week is going to give you the variances of 2425. So what we budgeted and how we actually came in. So that document is going to be provided to you ahead of the meeting. We haven't begun to work yet on the 2627 budget. We've still been trying to close out 2425. So we have no preliminary numbers at all as far as 2627 go, other than the ACT and ACT one index, which, again, we'll ask you to approve the resolution in November. That's about all we have right now for the 2627 budget.
Yeah, so ba- basically, you know, look, here's the bottom line. Last year, we received more information we have ever received, which we all have to admit, even, you know, for the ones been sitting on this school board and asked, you know, have itemized budgets and have itemized this. And we were always, yeah, yep, yep, we'll get that, and never seen anything. So we all have to admit, last year, we received more information, and it was overwhelming. So alls I'm saying is, this year, as we go into, you know, what is it, 2627? Okay, now we know what to ask. We're a little more prepared, and we can look at items that we didn't get a chance to see last budget. We can look at items that are going to be more present to us to see. So I'm, I'm just trying to be more visible to everyone of what we can get, what we can see, what's out there. So we're not sitting there asking numerous questions to Jen and Mark and, and overloading them, you know, and taking their time up of going back through and say, oh, my God, we, you know, we got hours to look through this. So that way, if all of us can put something together ahead of time, again, w- we're going to be ahead, especially since we've been receiving more information than, again, we ever have, it's going to help us. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, and the document that I have prepared, it goes over revenues in detail, like every major line item. Revenues aren't huge, but when you get into the expenditure side of it, I broke it out in two different ways. I broke it out by object level, so you can look at the 100s and 200s for salary and benefits. And then I also broke it out by programs. So you can look at regular programs and library services and nursing and business office and all of it, and how that makes up the budget too. So it really tells the story, I think. But it is going to be overwhelming, as does Dr., Mr., Mr., Mr. White had mentioned, because it.
Right up, right up the piece. It's on something.
So one of the things that we did last year, that I would like to see it this way again, is we also showed it in a percentage increase and a dollar amount increase. So we had some things, as an example, that went from 100 bucks to 900 bucks, which looks like a really high percentage. But the combination of those two pieces of information together, when we got towards the end, I want to say we ranked it and said, show us everything that was up more, not literally, but just figuratively, more than 10%, and was more than a $50,000 increase. And when you take all those pages of information, and you shrink it down into that kind of category, I think looking at it that way was really helpful for people to see. Having something go up by the rate of inflation should be expected. So having every little thing that go up does need looked at. But I know for me, looking at the percentage increase and the total dollar increase, and then breaking it out to where was the biggest areas, those two combinations was really helpful for me.
And, and I agree, you know, each, each department gets a budget. So, you know, like, I'd like to see, okay, you know, 2425 or coming in 2627, how, how well did those departments run lean? Or, or did they just take their budget and say, I'm just going to use a fictitious, you know, say, say, we had $30,000. Did they say, oh, we have $30,000? Did they spend that $30,000 to make sure they had no budget? Or were they being frugal and saying, okay, you know, we don't need this, you know, we can move some of that money over to, you know, 2627 and help out? So that, you know, yes, there are some great points there. And, and that's why I thought this year, we can ask those questions. We could see those and, and be a little more involved.
Yes, and I do have it broken out like that, Mr. Ramsey, with dollar and percentages. And if it was a higher percentage or dollar amount, either way, I have described the reason and included that with the document.
I just want to give kudos. In the past year, I think you guys both kind of touched on it. We've had a handful of monumental changes from board visibility and the district collaboration, and this has been one. So I know that it was a collaborative experience, and with the prior superintendent, Mark, and yourself, I thank you for getting us to this place of true visibility, and also where we landed with the budget last year, and getting it to be where it landed. That takes work and effort. And those are one of the points of pride in the last 365 days. So thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to Jen for getting us the information ahead of time. I think that helps that we can get questions organized in Doug's way ahead of time, and that'll save a lot of time.
All right, thanks, Jen. Moving on to policy with Mrs. Baum.
Okay, the policy committee met on September 22nd, and we looked at policies A to F that are listed on the agenda, and you receive these in your packet at the end of last week. And if better than the policy itself, Suzanne puts a nice policies to be presented for consideration paper together. policies to be presented for consideration paper together, um, showing us the number, the section, the title, the reason for it and the status review, whether, um, our council has looked at it or not. So we'll open it up for any questions or concerns.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to thank, uh, if it's Suzanne that puts these together. I mean, the, uh, summary is great. Yes. I mean, years ago, you'd have to read through the whole policy and I'd be like, oh God. So no, this, this is absolutely wonderful and thank you.
Ditto. Thank you, Suzanne. It just makes this job a lot easier. All right. Personnel, who are we going to? I can just toss it to Dr. G.
Okay, thank you. Um, the first is a, a proposed, um, MOU between the district and the teachers' association uh, regarding, uh, SG Flex. Uh, we had a, a situation with a synchronous student who's uh, taking that course synchronously. So as we discussed earlier, and it's explained in the, uh, in the, in the MOU, um, this takes care of that problem.
All right. And I will quote, um, Mr. Stein. Anyone need executive session for personnel?
Rachel, this is Doug. Uh, I just want to say thanks. Thanks again for no missing names or in the preliminary. Uh, I appreciate that.
That's important to you. Does anyone need to discuss that in executive session, the confidential memo? Okay. Then those acts will be on action voting for, um.
I do have a question on, on the random understanding. I'm not sure, is that $400 for or they, the whole year or is that just for the first semester?
It's only, it's both. It's only taking place in the first semester and it's the one and only. It's $400 for the year, but it's only, it's going to be done by the end of the first semester.
They're discontinuing.
It's, okay. It's the situation will end at the end of the first semester and that's what it's encompasses and it's not, not taking place in the second semester.
Okay. So we're paying the $400 for the 18 weeks.
Correct.
All right. Any, um, planning items for future agendas?
This is not really a planning item, but I have been sitting on this and I would like to ask Mr. Gareth my two questions. Um, when this, sorry, it, uh, when this happened with the, with the Dr. Bradley thing, this has been politicized and weaponized. And I wanted to say this the night that we had to vote on it. Um, so I'm going to ask you the two questions and I'm okay with the one word answer that I already know what they are. But did we find anything or know of anything that was criminally done by Dr. Bradley?
No, no, there were no criminal charges filed or considered at any point to my knowledge.
And was there anything that happened that broke his contract that he did violate his contract?
To my knowledge, no.
I would like to be able to answer those two questions when I get asked. And the way that it has been weaponized and politicized and some of the information that is clearly coming from some board members out to people in the public, I am frustrated with and I just want to move forward and I wanted to be able to answer those two things. Thank you.
All right.
I do have a question. Are we going to ever discuss that, that PACE survey? Is that?
PACE survey.
Yeah, we had got the information.
Yeah. Um, Dr. Ludwig, do you want to do that now or do we want to put that on the agenda? Or I would, I think, can we come prepared to talk about it at the next meeting? Okay. Thank you so much. I think that would be good timing. More board members present and yeah, good timing. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ludwig. Anything else? All right. Motion to adjourn.